The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, November tenth, two thousand and twenty, is now called to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic and for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, public hearing are approved. Next, we have first readings. Clerk, will you please read bill number one fourteen dash twenty?
Yes. In order to the St. Joseph County Council amending chapter ninety-one air pollution control of the St. Joseph County Code, petitioners, Mr. Krasinski, Mr. Tansrake, Mr. Kennerick, Ms. Hesse.
Bill number one fourteen dash twenty is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee.
Bill one fifteen twenty, amending the section three, Title III, page one five, a amendment to pay cash to the St. Joseph County Department of Public, petitioner, St. Joseph County Department of Public.
Bill number one fifteen dash twenty is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee.
Bill one fifteen twenty, in order to the vacant public way or public place located within the unoccupied portion of the St. Joseph County Public Way or Public Place located at that portion of Kraus Avenue, bound by Purley Avenue, NCT South, Margaret Street to the north, lot one sixty-seven and lane of Lexington Park to the east, and Jefferson Hole, Section Two, to the west of that portion, Purley Avenue, bound by lot one sixty-six and lot one sixty-seven of Lexington Park, and vacant alley between them to the north, Break Avenue to the east, South Line of Section Four, Council thirty-seven, north, Range Four, east to the south, and Lot forty-eight of Jefferson Hole, Section Two, to the west, and Township, St. Joseph County, Section Four, P thirty-seven and R four, three, petitioner, David Timberbill, Gregory Parker, and George E. Wright.
Bill number one sixteen dash twenty is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill one seventeen twenty, amending the supplement title four, land use is chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning of.
...by December fourteenth, the electors will cast a vote in their respective.
What? What was that? All right, well, I was interrupted here, let's keep reading. As a matter of property located at thirteen, six, four, four, in the highway from C Commercial District, site plan specific to C Commercial District, not site plan specific, petitioner, Horizon Blue Investment, LRLC.
Bill number one seventeen dash twenty is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next, we have resolutions. Clerk, will you please read resolution bill number one oh nine twenty?
Resolution of the St. Joseph County Council honoring and congratulating Michael McGann, St. Joseph County Coroner, for receiving the Crowder Award for Outstanding Indiana Coroner, whereas, messaging McGann, Mike was selected to fill out a written basis in deputy coroner position with the St. Joseph County Coroner's Office in 2012, and whereas in 2016, Mike won election for the St. Joseph County Coroner. Taking office in January of 2017, he remains the currently serving St. Joseph County Coroner, and whereas most time in the St. Joseph County Coroner's Office, Mike recruited three deputy coroners to the St. Joseph County Coroner's Office.
Well, yeah, that's fine.
Whereas, Mike had professionalism, dedication, and compassion, placing the greeting man of the county first, and where the St. Joseph County Coroner's Office. And whereas, as part of the professionalism during his tenure, Mike had testified on job training by going on every call together with his deputies, ensuring training was hands-on, and inserting address code with uniforms to assure the leader and appearance of the coroner's office, professional, compassionate, and impactful, and whereas, early in his tenure, Mike set specific goals for the St. Joseph County Coroner's Office, and has accomplished several, including, one, obtaining a subscription to the Michiana Hospital Information Network for use by the St. Joseph County Coroner's Office to expedite obtaining the deceased's prior medical history information, two, obtaining vehicles for use by the coroner's office, three, entering into cooperation with the Port, Marshall, Fulton, and Cosiasko County Coroner's Offices to assist with personnel and equipment in the event of a mass mortality, four, certified two additional reserve deputy coroners through the State of Indiana, and five, was asked by the Attorney General of the State of Indiana to take possession of two thousand four hundred and eleven fetal remains for care and final disposition. And whereas, due in part to his efforts and accomplishments described above, the Indiana State Coroner's Association, in conjunction with the Indiana State Coroner's Training Board, awarded Mike the Crowder Award for being an outstanding Indiana coroner at their 2019 Congress. Now, therefore, be resolved, by the St. Joseph County Council, on behalf of the St. Joseph County Coroner, the St. Joseph County Council, we proudly and publicly recognize and congratulate Michael McGann, the St. Joseph County Coroner, and the recipient, the Crowder.
You are the only one who can see those who'd like you to answer your questions. You can try to start from the door. Do you want to see?
Any questions? Any questions for council? Hearing none, do I hear?
(noise) 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 Great, I can't hear.
But it's not you, it's them, right?
Have we lost audio?
It appears that way, yes.
Oh, we can talk to each other, huh?
Well, it's not good for me, or the other council members who are on there.
No.
Hello?
I think they do know there's a problem, they're working on resolving it right now.
Thanks, Jeff.
Is Talion on then, and Ruth?
Can anybody hear me? Have we lost audio?
It appears that way, yes.
Oh, we can talk to each other, huh?
Well, it's not good for me, or the other council members who are on there.
No.
Hello?
I think they do know there's a problem, they're working on resolving it right now.
Thanks, Jeff.
Is Talion on then, and Ruth?
Can you?
Everybody's on.
Okay. Can you hear now?
I can hear.
All right. Okay, we'll open the public hearing on bill number one thirteen twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing on one thirteen dash twenty is now closed. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number one thirteen dash twenty was made by Councilman Krasinski, it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Are there any further comments from any council member on one thirteen twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski? Yes. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Talion?
Yes.
Mr. Tansrake?
Yes.
Mr. Kennerick?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Thank you, let the record show that bill number one thirteen dash twenty was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number one ten dash twenty?
In order to amending, ordinance eighty nineteen, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees in the St. Joseph County in year twenty twenty, petitioner, Portage Manor.
Mr. Krasinski, can I report, please, sir?
Mr. President, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner? Petitioner?
You're muted, Robin.
Hi, this is Robyn Chaloner, from Portage Manor, three zero one six Portage Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four six six two eight, and we are asking for these funds to be transferred, or an appropriation, due to a position needed due to COVID-19 and sanitation that we needed to increase. Again, it was something we had to do very quickly, we didn't have a lot of time or warning, and so that's why it wasn't originally in our budget for 2020. So, just asking that we can get this appropriated and get our funds good for the end of the year.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number one ten dash twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill number one ten dash twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Move for passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number one ten dash twenty was made by Councilwoman Hess, it was seconded by Councilman Kennericki. Any further comments from any council member on one ten dash twenty? Hearing none, please take the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Nolan?
Actually, just one thing I would like to say, my notes are here to talk about that the account number needs to be amended, just so we make note of that. The account number on the bill has, is that correct, Robin?
That is correct. I was a little confused at this agenda, so I was just trying my best to get through it, but yeah, this money has actually been approved to go through CARES Act funding, because this position was especially for COVID-19, we had not prepared, or do not continue or plan to continue this position once COVID-19 ends.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes.
Okay. Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Talion?
Yes.
Mr. Tansrake?
Yes.
Mr. Kennerick?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Thank you, let the record show that bill number one ten dash twenty was passed by a vote of nine to zero. The St. Joseph County with year twenty twenty, petitioner, Adult probation. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening, Jesse Carlton, Chief Promotion Officer with the Adult Promotion Department, office located here on Fourth floor of County City Building. We are requesting permission to appropriate funds for the grant that we received from the Indiana Office of Court Services to continue our pretrial services division. This includes homes for two probation officers and part-time public offenders representing those that are in need.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number one eleven dash twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on one eleven twenty?
For approval. Second.
A motion to pass bill number one eleven dash twenty was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilman Kennericki. Any further comments from any council member on one eleven twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Talion?
Yes.
Mr. Tansrake?
Yes.
Kennericki?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Krasinski?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Thank you, let the record show that bill number one eleven dash twenty was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda, we have public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read bill number one twelve dash twenty?
In order to appropriating and transferring property to the purpose here in specified by the seven quarters here listed, St. Joseph County Government.
May I have a motion on bill number one twelve dash twenty?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number one twelve dash twenty was made by Mr. Krasinski, it was seconded by Mr. Nolan. Any further comments from any council member on one twelve dash twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Talion?
Yes.
Kennericki?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Krasinski?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, let the record show that bill number one twelve dash twenty was passed by a unanimous vote of nine to zero. Next, we have land use, and land use planning. Clerk, will you please read bill number forty-nine twenty?
That's already just been tabled.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forty-nine twenty has been tabled, sorry about that. Clerk, will you please read bill number fifty-seven twenty?
In order to amending, supplement title fifty, land use is chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code is amended, a property located five six, four five eight, Willow Road, three one, nine one seven, state road two, and five six, three four two, Willow Road, New Carlisle, from A agricultural district to I industrial district, petitioner, St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, bill number fifty-seven twenty comes to the full council without a recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Ryan Follows with St. Joseph County Area Planning Commission. This is a floor of property, it's about, close to minus twenty-four acres, it's right across the road from Navstar, so it's at the corner with Walnut and Saproots Two. Here's a picture of the property, it recently had a house there, but it's been removed, and the second house, which has been removed, and the third house, which has been removed. So mostly it's just farmland right now, and there's a little bit of, a couple of foams on the left side of it right now. The site plan does not contemplate any particular suit for use at this point, this is just three zones and industrial at this time. Saproots Two is a four lane, minor material highway with good traffic accessibility. I did want to point out that Vendix Woods County Park is located at the corner to the site, and a little down. I wanted to highlight in the two thousand and three Coniferance of Plan Goal One, is to alleviate and minimize the loss of agricultural land. This area was highlighted in the two thousand and two Coniferance Plan for having soil associations and the high yield crop lands, but in balance with Coniferance of Plan Goal Number Two, to encourage economic development of the county and its municipalities, particularly for now into these policies, there is enough capacity to rezone this and not impact the provision of going too high on heavy industrial uses. The two thousand and two Coniferance Plan does contemplate, and I'm going to use this fact over here as my highlighter, but the two thousand and two Coniferance Plan does indicate this area is an industrial growth reserve, or the industrial growth area, this area is not included with that, but these areas were just meant to be generalized, and they were not meant to be exact, and we have to balance it out with, in nineteen ninety-seven, the St. Joseph County Economic Development District, number two, a fifth district, did include this area that was inside this boundary, and so it was reaffirmed in two thousand and sixteen as the renamed New Carlisle Economic Development Area, Fifth District, which expanded a little bit beyond where the previous boundary was, but again, included within that. Therefore, the area planning commission sent to you was a favorable recommendation. I just wanted to note that we did have three speakers and one letter in remonstrance, and we had no speakers or letters of support, and all of the criteria for rezoning are found in state law, there's five criteria which are listed there, and I'd be happy to go through any details anyone would like.
Any questions from council for the plan? Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, there's lines at Boston Fisher Associates, offices five forty-five at Boston, representing the visitors. This is an interesting petition, property, interesting by way of the path, it becomes a disappointing property, as you know, it's owned by St. Joseph County, and they originally approached these property owners with the idea that they're willing to, apart from the property, and apart of the location, the Nelson Johnny Dish, the Nelson Johnny Dish relocation project is timed to be completed for two reasons, one, to alleviate flooding issues by means of original stormwater retention, and two, to clear path for potential development properties, and then reszone the northeast of these properties. As of today, the Dish line is not a credit favor, is not a credit issue in favor of some other drainage structure improvements that are currently being pursued by the county, but several locations along the path of the county's industrial area. Furthermore, it is possible that post-development of parcel planning, northeast of the site did not require the Dish, maybe located in the redevelopment to occur. However, the county parcel, life of James, the visual site, still for, or positive opportunity in the form of stormwater management, and our property on the website. Another important reason to consider moving forward with the time, since the consideration of Chinese Chinese work with Oprah, the Indiana Office of Community and World Affairs, ensuring the site certification of this property, and buying into the properties in northeast. As qualification for site certification, all properties included in that type of additional Oprah, C2B property is built for the same use, and is a high industrial. So having this twenty-plus acres, and this development site, real industrial strength in that site certification process, including the county's redevelopment effort. Flexibility afforded by, resulting in this county property, which is important to the work that's being done by the county, township, and county of Carlisle, to establish guidelines for, the allowing of industrial, and the development constraints that are currently being served, the quarter of elementary and kindergarten center, at that point, has been similarly agreed to by the Sebastiak and Flities, these properties in northeast. I doubt that Mr. Shalio might come up and signature towards the petition, and address some finer points from the restrictions, for council.
Good evening, Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director, offices on the seventh and eleventh floors, Department of, as part of the Department of Destruction Planning and Row. One of the things that, since we were here last, doing a rezoning, we have solidified our four-party relationship with all the township, the board commissioners, the town of New Carlisle, and Redevelopment Commission. As part of an agreement that all four of those parties had, I think at the time we were here in September, we only had three parties that were, who were signatories to the agreement, now it's four. We have a series of steps and a series of pieces of the agreement that we're all working together to accomplish. One of those things was the creation of the core development area, what it was, is the core development area is a smaller area within the larger IEC area, that is where development will be focused over the next several years. The red area, basically, between State Road Two on the south, US twenty on the north, Willow Road, Walnut Road on the west, and Smilax Road on the east, that's the red square in the middle. That's where we see development, down in the bottom corner of that, the bottom southwest corner is where this rezoning is proposed. Several months ago, back in June, the Redevelopment Commission obtained option agreements on the Sebastiak and Minsky properties, the blue and the pink properties to the east of here, we're working with them to extend our option agreements, so that we can better solidify the opportunity, not only for site certification, but to move forward with actual development on those parcels. We anticipate that, that as we move forward, that the rezoning that you gave approval in September, and then subsequent actions that are being taken, will help move forward demands on this site. Lastly, as we talk about this green parcel in the corner, as we look at the industrial in the core development area, the zoning is consistent. One of the things that we provided to you earlier today, earlier today, the Redevelopment Commission approved a set of written commitments that we've asked to file as part of the rezoning, those written commitments are. What it was, is the core development area is a smaller area within the larger IEC area that is where development will be focused over the next several years. The red area basically is between State Road 2 in the south, US 20 on the north, Willow Road, Walnut Road on the west, and Smilax Road on the east, that's the red square in the middle. That's where we see development, down in the bottom corner of that, the bottom southwest corner is where this rezoning is proposed. It's several months ago, back in June, the Redevelopment Commission obtained the option agreements on the Sebastian Comiskey properties, the blue and the pink properties to the east of here. We're working with them to extend our option agreements, so that we can better solidify the opportunity, not only for site certification, but to move forward with actual development on those parcels. We anticipate that, that as we move forward, that the rezoning that you gave approval in September, and then subsequent actions that are being taken, will help move forward demands on this site. Lastly, as we talk about this green parcel in the corner, as we look at the industrial in the core development area, the zoning is consistent. One of the things that we provided to you earlier today, earlier today, the Redevelopment Commission approved a set of written commitments that we've asked to file as part of the rezoning. Those written commitments are consistent, oops, are consistent with the written commitments filed on the Comiskey and Sebastian properties. So we'd like to have them on file with you. If you don't have a copy of it, then you have copies here for you. So, we appreciate your support of the actions in this area, and we appreciate your support in rezoning today.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner?
Yeah, we've got a couple. We've got us working backwards here. You mentioned that the Comiskey and the, I'm sorry, the other family, Sebastian commitments from September, but have those actually been included in part of this yet, or what is the status of those?
Sebastian ones have been completed, and they've been reported. Comiskey ones, we've reported them, found out that was the issue, the way that the document was prepared, they're going back and being resigned, and should be filed, and it's done yesterday.
Okay, and that was...
Comiskey on file.
That's the version that was provided by Area Plan?
It was the version provided, circulated, I think, through Area Plan, through...
Okay, there were a couple of versions. It's all, I'm just trying to make sure that, because I haven't seen what was actually included, so I want to make sure it was, will be intended to be included.
Yeah, it was the one based on the motion.
And there were a couple versions of that, too, so...
Yeah, the one specific to Sebastian include the additional language for the wetlands and the preservation, and Comiskys, more these, contain that. Comiskys, because there's not a single tree on the site.
Correct.
And then these, because there's a few trees on the site.
And, I'm sorry, Mr., because I'm Boston Fisher, I didn't catch your name, but in your presentation, you mentioned about high industrial, and I'm not familiar with that term. What is, what do you consider high industrial?
I'm sorry, I said high industrial, I put heavy industrial.
Okay, but this is specifically, would not be heavy industrial, but you mentioned was that it would be high industrial.
I may have mentioned high industrial, or industrial?
I can't hear you. I cannot hear you. Speak up.
Sorry. I don't remember saying high industrial, I apologize.
Okay.
High industrial, please. I said high.
That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, you had a cross-hatched area that you showed us. What are the acres? How many acres is that?
So the purple boundary represents 7,200 acres, and the red area is 2920. So it's significantly smaller within the much larger area.
So we add the two together, right?
No, so the...
Are you saying that 2,900 includes the whole thing?
The 2,900 is the red, the 7,200 is included within, the red is included within that purple.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing, and just because this was raised this morning, any land that the commission has bought, or that the county has bought, and has had agricultural uses on it, we do continue to have the land farmed. We do have active farm leases on the properties, I did just, I wanted to mention that, because that would be much smaller.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, because sometimes the comment is made that the land will not have agricultural use waiting for us to have a new owner, and I think that's what you're clearing up.
Back to, Mr. Shalio, if I had one more, back to those commitments from September, do you know when we'll get signed copies and when they'll be recorded?
I think the signed copies of the Sebastian's could be circulated yet today, the Comiskey's as soon as we get them done this week, and we can get those circulated.
Okay.
And then these, they were signed by Brian Klosky, the president, but not, not a resident or witness, but we want to wait until we get through tonight to see if anything additional is added, so.
Well, I think...
But those will be circulated.
Okay. At this point, anyways, I think my last question is, so is the agreement with the four parties and kind of the intent to move forward with rezoning everything in that red space even without a current potential use? Do you want to get those rezoned all industrial ahead of any imminent use?
Right. No, I think that's a, that's a great question, so I'm gonna, this is probably the easier map. So, right now, the only areas really left that we would seek to rezone, there's a petition that was tabled tonight, that's going to be paired with a petition at your next meeting, as we have filed a couple of prospect, prospect applications to the property at the southwest corner of Larison and Edison. So there's, there's a couple of projects that we filed petitions on for that. So that really is the last area that we could seek any rezoning for, for industrial out here, until there's further plans or further action. So, we're really, we're really trying to stay within this Larison border and what's already done industrial.
Okay, which then leads me to the next question, is if we have, if that's 2,900 acres, what do we have currently, 1,000 acres, 1,500 acres of industrial zoned that is not being used now? So the question, why do we need to go and take the next step and get this other 300 acres if they, if we don't have an imminent user?
Right.
Somebody's not knocking on the door today, why, why are we going down this, this next step?
We rezoned the 750, that was the, the blue and the purple parcels. We had prospects that are interested in the Edison and Early Corridor, those properties adjacent that they have. That would only work out to about another 150, maybe 200 acres at most in that corridor. Of the rest of that, the rest of it's really developed. So, Intec and Co have very little industrial, industrial, industrial zoned land that's available. The Energy Center is to the west of it, and it's already done and developed, beside you. So there's not a lot of additional undeveloped industrial land within the quarter of their existence.
Well, there's 750 acres that we just hit, right?
Right, I mean, beyond that, yeah.
And trust me, this little corner down here, I get it, it makes sense, that we did this up, the 750 acres, but I continually get the question, this is the hardest part for me to answer, is, okay, we've got 700, let's say everything else is already taken up, but now we've got 750 acres, and there's really nobody clamoring at the door for that, so why do we go do the next 100, and then the next 100, and next month we do another 100?
Well, and some of that's just size, and there aren't a lot of 750 acres size parcels in the country. So, trying to protect that instead of subdividing it up into the ones that are 30 or 40 or 100 acre parcels. So these properties between Edison and Early open up some opportunities for the 20, 30, 40, 50 acres. And so it, it really is the scalability of different products that we're trying to look at in the market.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just to help me one more time, you've got an outside red line there, okay? All right, well, go back to the first one.
Okay.
Okay, you've got a red line around that.
Correct.
Right. Inside that red line is what, 2,900 acres?
2,900 and 28 acres, yeah.
2,900 and 28 acres. Okay. So that's your, that's where you're at now?
Well, that's, that's our core development area, that's the area where we're going to focus all our efforts and all our development prospects.
So you're saying we got a 2,900 acre pro, situation on our hands? Not 12,000, not something else?
Right, and again, of that 2,900 acres, if you take out the property that's already developed, with Intec, Intec, the power plant, and some of the other users, they're probably really down to, you know, maybe 1,300 acres of, maybe, maybe a little higher than that.
Okay, okay, well, I just wanted to understand what's inside that red line. Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Camera Ricky?
Thank you. Well, thanks, Bill, for all this information. So, as you've presented this to us over the last couple of years or so, we've seen the graphs of how, you know, the ability to attract development is contingent on putting X, Y, and Z in place to try and make it more suitable, more attractive. And throughout that conversation, the goal has been stated clearly as large format industrial. We haven't really learned exactly what that might be. I don't even think you guys know exactly what that might be, but we've had some ideas of, you know, some sort of data center or something like that. We've certainly pressed, on behalf of the people we represent, that it is a clean use. And I think with our recent action of the 700-plus acres of rezoning, we really hit that mark. You know, and we've created a parcel that suits those needs. So, so your previous statement a couple minutes ago, about how we're now aiming to create smaller 30 and 40 acre parcels to put this product on the market, I feel that that's almost contradictory to what the stated goal has been.
Well, so I, I would say that we've looked at large format sites, there's really two large format sites out here. There's, there's this area between Early and State Road 2, and State Road 2 down to the Henry Road or Golden Road south, so the land adjacent to the Navstar Proving Ground. From there, then, it's more infill, large format industrial. So a 50 acre site, a 60 acre site is still big format. When you look at the sites of the American High School, some of the areas northwest of the airport, and we're really running out of land northwest that we reported this one time. A lot of those sites are anywhere between 10 and 15 acres. So, we're looking for the next, you know, bigger format site. And we'll tell you, the biggest struggle we've had in the last six months is finding sites for warehouse buildings over, over 500,000 square feet. We've had five prospects in the last six months come in, needing space for building 500,000 square feet to a million square feet. Those take about 80 acres to put together. Those aren't the type of prospects we want out here, because those are trucks and heavy logistics projects, and, so those aren't the kind of users that are going to come out here. But what we do see is that for a rail server site, or a bigger industrial site, we do need 30 to 50 to 60 acres for the site. So that's why some of those quarters, like the, like the Tahat site that sits on 30 acres, those would be those kind of users, that would be the infill complementary users to a bigger user site.
So this one, you know, with, if you're looking at this map, looking at, if you went back to the pink and purple map, you know, obviously, if we're imagining this is, as a jigsaw puzzle, that piece is the corner to the completed picture of the pink and purple parcels, right?
That is correct, yes.
So this would not be one of these infill lots?
The, the screen on the corner?
Right.
That is absolutely correct, yeah.
Okay.
And then personally, because we would not want direct access to State Road 2 at that location, and because it has a drainage outfall, we talked about the Nessbog Johnny Ditch earlier, so there is an outfall for drainage under the, under the road here, that was why we looked at moving the ditch there in the first place. So that area is either going to serve as drainage, or it's going to serve as buffer, or it's going to serve as some other...
complement to this grader, okay. So I guess that really, and I'm going to sort of play off of Councilman Nolan's comments, do we have somebody that's sitting here and said, if only we had 800 acres instead of 750, we could make this project work?
So, we had a prospect in June, at the end of June, that was at the meeting for the Area Planning Commission, that was ready to sign, a deal for this acre to once it was rezoned. Part of the challenge we had is, we had just signed the option agreements, the option agreements were structured to put together a deal specific to that user. That user pulled, after rezoning, troubles, we had troubles here, we were still in conversations with that user, that user, the last conversation we had, said, let's see what happens with the national elections, and then we'll have a talk after the first year. So, we're still having conversations with that user, but still having conversations with other users, too. And part of the reason that site certification is so important, going back to the risk graph, if you will, is the ability to get site certified, and get it all site certified, puts us farther down that risk curve for something coming out.
And I, I do get that, I really do get that, but I think if we're trying to bend that curve, our recent action of rezoning 700 really should say to, to prospective developers, they are willing to come to the table, but right now, we're kind of sitting alone at the table. You know, and, and maybe to finish this puzzle, we need to hear more about what this is going to be, you know, and in spite of the agreements that the current landowners have signed, you know, there, there is certainly fear amongst people that live out there, that something could happen that somehow fit within those agreements, but still didn't really meet the intention of those agreements, and other things. So, I would sure be interested to know who's at the other side of that table, if, if we can get someone there.
Well, and, and again, we'd like to get that person back to the table, so that we could have them in, and we can talk about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you said warehouses over what size?
500,000 square feet right now is the big number. So the, recently in, in southeast side of Chicago, Amazon built 2 million square foot warehouse buildings, or is in the process of building, 2 million square foot. They just announced a project over Fort Wayne, that I think was 600,000, expandable up to 800,000. So that really is the sweet spot right now for major logistics projects.
500,000 is about how many acres, did you say?
Well, 500,000, you would do probably very comfortably around 40 to 50, but if you did it up to 800,000, to a million, you're looking at a street, between parking and drainage.
Yeah. Of course, the thing about a warehouse is you don't have noise, you don't have these other things that we've been hearing about.
But you have traffic, a lot, a lot of traffic.
You got a lot of traffic, but you don't, but you also probably don't have a lot of employment, either.
Well, I mean, depending on, yeah, depending on warehouse.
Yeah, but, but it doesn't have environmental questions, I wouldn't think. A warehouse, right.
Any other questions from council? Hearing number, open public hearing on Bill Number 5720. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Hold on, hold on, sir.
I'm Judith Luskey at 515 South New Street South, in New Orleans. And I'm familiar with space, and you are familiar with me. I have been committed since January, at least of 2019, that feels more like January or 2018, with the aftermath, support of our county's farm law, and opening spaces remaining attached, and I am still committed. So, I wonder how far away this 24 acre piece of land gives to South Bend? And I'm going to read this article from the November issue of Aces Magazine. Can United States cities grow all the food they need? It depends. Some, but not all of the United States rental areas could grow all the food they need locally. According to a new study estimating the degree to which the American food supply could be localized based on population, geography, and diet. The study led by Tufts University researchers was recently published in Environmental Science and Technology. The model estimates whether 378 metropolitan areas could meet their food needs from local agricultural land located within 250 kilometers, which is 150 miles. And the results suggest metro centers in the northwest and interior of the country have a greater potential for localization. Large portions of the population along the eastern border and the southwest corner of the United States would have the least potential for localization. Not everyone lives near enough to, to agricultural, not everyone lives near enough agricultural land to have an entirely local or even regional food supply, as researchers said. So look how close to South Bend that 24 acres is. Did you know that Maryland, the state of Maryland is paying farmers $45 per every day of a planting cover crop? Cover crop planting is essential to rebuilding more topsoil. We keep losing topsoil inch by inch due to winds and so forth, and runoff. And a lot of people are thinking now of moving away from harvest salt states, because of the repeated flooding, this experience. And then people are thinking about leaving their places where there are forest fires eminent. This is what, that we all have to deal with now, so, anyway, so, I wonder, and then we need more trees, too, so I'm, this, this is, the world has changed a lot since 2002, I get that, but we have to think about people getting hungry and getting angry, and we need to be more resilient. be more resilient.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address. For the record, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Dan Caruso, 305 Confin Street, New Coral Island. First off, I want to thank all of you tonight for your words. Your questions were poignant. They're the questions we've been asking all along, residents of New Coral Island, all the township, my friends from Open Space Agricultural Alliance. You haven't developed the industrial land that you've got already. You have a vacant Tejas tubular building. The SMS shredder is on its third owner. We're going to look like Gary East before too much longer. This type of stuff coming in here is not going to last. It's not going to provide much employment, as was stated by Mr. File. It is not going to contribute to the growth of New Coral Island, the health of the schools or the fire department or the library. I don't, this property in particular, as Mr. Chalio said, won't be used for industrial purposes. It'll be a buffer, hopefully for my friend, Mr. Zoll, or my friend, Mr. Tolman or Mr. Zoll on the west side of Willow Road, right across from east side of Willow Road, which is what is being zoned industrial. How, if it's going to be, this is just a box, but it isn't industrial. There's other fights beyond this, but not this. I would first say it's not industrial if you want a buffer for my consent on the west side of Willow Road. I don't get it. At the meeting in September, where the rezonings were upheld by the council, there were a number of speakers in support of this, none of whom reside in New Coral Island, all the township. It's always brought up there. But we're not very unioned to be complaining about this. It's just Dan, and it's Jack, and it's Chris, Garrett. It's just you guys just complaining. Well, yeah, we're complaining. A number of us live in all the township of New Coral Island. People who are pushing this are outside speculators. And again, thank you, council, for your poignant questions tonight. I thank you. Obviously, you paid interest to, you paid attention to this, and you've taken interest in making sure things are being done properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of bill number 5720?
I'd like to speak in opposition.
Sir, we have, you'll be next.
My name is Dennis Ryan, I live at 51860, Shell Drive in June, Indiana. I just have a question that I don't expect an answer for. What happened to the 1,000 acres at Ron Village that was going to be the next industrial? That's not agricultural. It's a woods, unfortunately, I'm sorry, but what happened there? Thank you.
Thank you. Did you state your name and address for the record from now? Okay, that's fine. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Christopher Cobb. I live at 215 East Polkagen Street, South Bend, Indiana. I want to echo Mr. Caruso's thanks to the council for your careful questioning on these, on this petition. I do, I do think it would have been valuable to ask some harder questions back in September when a much larger parcel was, was up for rezoning. I think it's clear that the amount of, of land that's been rezoned for industry in this area has already reached the level that is, that is proposed by the, by the 2002 comprehensive plan, and that there is plenty of undeveloped land now rezoned for industrial. I think that it's prudent not to just lay out things in a speculative way. Speculative rezoning is something that is generally considered to be a bad practice. I believe that what happened in September was, was to a considerable extent speculative rezoning that went farther than it should, and this is just adding, adding more to the, to the pile of, of land that's just there to be, to be played with, without our knowing the public, without, without the council knowing what it's going to be used for. So I think it'd be prudent on the council's part to, as has been suggested by some of Mr. Tanarakis' questions, to withhold rezoning until we see a bit more whether what's going to come in here would be beneficial or would even need that land. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of bill number 5720?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Right, sir.
Yeah, this is Steve Francis. I live at 54174 Judy Lake Drive up in Clay Township. Yeah, I would like to kind of follow on Councilmember Nolan's and Tanarakis' questions and follow through with a more declarative statement, and that is, you know, last, at the last, I think it was last month, you, you approved the rezoning from ag to industrial of, you know, 750 acres, as was explained. And at the time, I said, I testified, I wouldn't expect that you'd remember this, but you're going to be hit with, you know, little parcels of land time and time again. And how, what are you going to do in relation to those requests in the future? And the response was often, was in some ways, through council members' testimony or in the hearing, was that, oh, well, that we're going to try this out and see how it goes, but this is what we're going to do now. For now, this is enough until we see whether industrial actors do come in and are attracted to the land. And I would ask you to follow through on that, the council members who have some questions about this. Let's see where this 750 acres goes. I was opposed to it. I think that you're ignoring goal one or objective one in the master plan, where we're supposed to minimize the loss of agricultural land, and you're doing it, as, as Mr. Cobb said, in a speculative way, rather than having a customer or someone in hand who wants to use the land and you can really purvey, you can, you can investigate what that, what that kind of industrial activity was or will be. So I urge you to oppose this and to see where things go, to follow through on comments that I heard last time, and to, to really stop the sort of parade of land that you're going to get now and into the future. Secondly, on the restrictive covenants or the restrictions on the, on the land before, from last month, I don't think I've ever seen that published. I don't know if it's publishable, but I would like to get a copy of those restrictions. It seemed like they're still, they were still in formation. And are those restrictions also going to be applied in other instances if you do decide, I hope you don't, but if you do decide to rezone land? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of bill 5720? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill number 5720. Now the petitioner has three minutes to rebut any comments made in opposition to 5720.
Good evening, Aaron Blank, 5725, Washington, South Bend. In terms of the question about why is this industrial, the point of use of drainage for buffer.
Speak up, please.
In terms of the question, why, when is this property being used as industrial? When it, the question came up, it could be used as buffer or reasonable potentially. These uses kind of, they need to be coagulated and used together. Potential development of the site would require some type of buffer and some type of drainage and this product went to that, that's why I stated that together. And like I said before, the flexibility with developing the site towards that site. Mr. Cobb's comments about speculative zoning, I would say that that is necessarily directly on behalf of the county developer. That is necessarily part of their job is to speculate what might happen on property and to prepare for development, as Mr. Chalio referenced. Over guidelines and processes for the site certification, it's part of the duty to set up these, to achieve those economic targets in it. In terms of the parade of parcels, for these sites in this area, we're covenanted on the core development area. Mr. Chalio, we do different sized sites, require different size, different needs require different sized sites. And the outlook, it's what's been talked about in that four party group for all the area and that double hash to use the zone, so that's, yes, that is the intent here, and that's a shock to the, to continue on with progress for these areas, that's the plan in that four party group.
Thank you. May I have a motion on bill number 5720?
I'd like to ask a question first, Mr. President. This is, being in Mr. Tullian's district, I'd be interested if you have any comments or anything you'd like to share, any thoughts on this?
No comments, thank you.
May I have a motion on bill number 5720?
There's no motion, what happens? Well, if you would favor the area plan, I think you should make a motion. If you don't act on it, why believe that you have acted yet to approve of it? Because the area plan decision will.
I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't hear you.
If you don't make some type of motion on the bill, the decision of area plan will prevail on my end.
It will? Which was to approve?
Correct. If you're not action, you don't approve.
I wondered, Mike, if, if it wasn't for the fact that it was a land use thing and then here's a proof that if it was an ordinary measure, it would die for lack of a motion?
Correct.
So how's this saying?
Different way.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Same reason, it doesn't go to the commissioners, but don't animal.
Okay. Make a motion not to approve. 5720. There's a motion on the floor to deny, a motion in a second to deny bill number 5720. There was a motion made to deny by Councilman Krasinski and a second by Councilman Camaricki.
I have a question.
Any further comments, Mr. File?
You know, just help me understand. We had some people that said they had some land and they wanted to sell that land, and we said that it was going to be subject to it being, and light industrial or whatever you call it. Is, is that land now being said, are we saying to those people that offered that land that the deal's out? Is that what we're saying? I mean, we had, we had a guy here and his son, and they made it a rather, I think, compelling case that their family had a good reason to sell this land, and that actually they were going to continue to do agriculture. So I'm trying to find out if this action at this point turns these people on their head who spent this time with us.
Well, what I'm trying to do is get some development out there. I want somebody to come, I want somebody to come forward that's actually going to develop out there with a site plan that we can approve instead of just approving land from agricultural to industrial with, with assuming that somebody's going to build there.
I appreciate your view.
There's 750 acres there, open, for somebody to come build there. Let's build.
Well, okay.
There's probably around there, let's build.
I appreciate your question, but are these people that offered us this land, we're a war up here, this man and his son have offered this land for sale, are we now turning them away? That's just a question.
Excuse me, I don't see that man and that son of mine right now. This is a total different issue.
Okay, pardon me, I'm just trying to get.
Totally different. This is totally different issue.
Oh, okay. Help me understand.
Now, unless they're invisible, I'm sorry, Dick, but I don't see them. We're talking about 5720.
I'm just trying to get information. I'm not trying to disagree with you, I'm trying to find out if those people that offered that land are part of us turning them down.
I'm not sitting up here saying that people can't sell their land. If people want to sell their land, bring us a site plan.
Can I, can I, this site is owned by redevelopment. Owned by redevelopment, you're not void, you're not, actually, if you choose not to approve this, you're not voiding a sale or anything or any economic development out of the, the committee.
I just want to be informed because we had these people and.
It's owned by redevelopment. It's not, it's not the Kaminsky or the.
Sebastian. Nothing changes for those two.
Those folks are. There's a motion to deny bill number 5720 made by Councilman Krasinski and it was seconded by Council, Councilman Camaricki. Any other comments from any council member on bill 5720? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Remember, this is a vote to deny. A yes would be a vote to deny.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Mr. President. Mr. Tullian?
Yes, on the motion to deny.
Mr. Tanarakis?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
Mr. Shinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
No.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
More?
Let the record show that bill number 5720 was denied by a vote of seven to two. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 9320?
With order to many, title 525, 154, planning and zoning, they just can't include the management of our building, is 11870 Adams Road, schedule of 23, rain, from our single family districts to both office districts, and the fishery is in.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. Morton, bill number 93-20 comes with counsel's favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Ryan, fellow member of area plan commission, officers on the left floor. This property is along State Route 23 where it's known as Adams Road. A little bit closer, this is a two lane, minor arterial part of Adams Road. The site would be on well-insepted. There's a picture of it from the road, a bit off the road. A little bit closer, you see the neighbors, drive and vehicles, that's for the neighboring property with a fence line, so you can see the driveway right along the neighboring property. There's a picture of the church from the inside the parking lot looking back toward the road. Can't see too well in this picture, but from the parking lot, there is a residential dwelling right in the middle of that picture, shaded by trees, but here in the house looking towards the, the building, you can see it well. And then additional fixtures, and this comes to with a favorable recommendation, and I could answer any questions.
Any questions from council for area plan? Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. My name is Lucas Miles and pastor at Influence Church at the address that's being discussed. As I mentioned, we've received favorable recommendation thus far. We put our property up for sale as a church, it's still an active church, we're still meeting, we made it through COVID, though it's been challenging as ministry. We had the church up for sale just before the shutdown, actually earlier in 2020, and obviously that kind of slowed down things as far as our plans, which caused us as a ministry to sort of step back and reevaluate exactly what it is that we want to do. We did have several interests. We did have several interested parties who looked at the property, um, and all of them were turned, turned off noting the residential zoning. Uh, it was things like a, a ballet company or ballet studio for kids and some other, you know, kind of simple businesses that came through. Uh, so they walked away after they found out that we were selling residential. As I understand, the church can meet in virtually any zoning, so it is listed residential. It has kind of some interesting history to the property that's, that put us there. At one time, this was a well-run company and, and, uh, garage and all sorts of things. Uh, we have updated the property, uh, you know, added to it. It's about a four-acre, uh, property there that we've done one renovation on. We've been into, uh, the building since two thousand and nine. Uh, we are still sort of navigating what our, uh, options are as a ministry. Uh, we have run out of office space and children's space at this property. So if we were to stay at this location, it would force us to make additional, uh, um, uh, you know, additional renovations in addition to the property to accommodate kids ministry, offices, et cetera. Um, and, you know, so we're looking for, uh, just making sure that we have as many options as a ministry during kind of this challenging year and moving forward as we can. Uh, we do have a temporary space that we are looking, uh, at possibly moving into in early twenty-twenty-one, um, as this property, uh, has really at a point where in its current standpoint doesn't really suit our needs. It does have three, um, septic tanks in the back, kind of oversized use, so it's not your traditional residential property from that standpoint. Uh, it is an office, um, really six days a week. Uh, we have addiction groups to meet there, we have, um, loud music on Sunday mornings, we have traffic in and out on the weekends, all of these things that would not come with a regular office zoning. Uh, so we, we are, you know, continuing to utilize our, um, you know, right to stay in that property and to, to see if we can make it fit our use, which would be wonderful. Uh, but if not, uh, we would be looking to sell the property and hopefully, uh, you know, just because of the challenges and trying to find another church that is looking for something like that, our, our building does not, you know, it doesn't have the, uh, the church look to it, it's a much more of a, uh, um, it could pass as an office, it could pass as a, uh, uh, a small, um, uh, you know, various facilities, uh, for businesses. And so we're looking just for, uh, opportunity, uh, in a resale of that, uh, to leave the options for the church open.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number ninety-three twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on ninety-three twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Again, this is Mr. File's district, be interested if you have any input or.
I have no concern with it.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass bill number ninety-three twenty was made by Councilman Camaricki. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tanswray?
Yes.
Mr. Camaricki?
Yes.
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tawoyan?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number ninety-three twenty was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number one oh three dash twenty?
One oh three twenty, in accordance with the position of the council, under Title fifteen, Chapter one fifty-four, land use, which is made just according to the code, to provide assorted fixes for land use regulations, which is, uh, very important.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
President, bill number one zero three dash twenty comes with a counsel with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Hi again, Ryan Fellows, in this, uh, County Plan Commission, upstairs on the left floor. And really, the impetus which brought this to you is, uh, the wish to extend the physical culture and health services, including gymnasiums, reducing, so on, so on, and public baths to the needs of the district. And while I was at it, I also wanted to correct a couple instances of, where it's a common council in the book to county council. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number one oh three twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on one oh three twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion to pass bill number one oh three dash twenty was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Camaricki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tawoyan?
Yes.
Mr. Tanswray?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number one oh three dash twenty was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number one oh four dash twenty?
Twenty, in accordance with repeal and repeal of land use, Chapter one fifty-three, subdivisions of the San Francisco County Code, adopting a new, Chapter one fifty-three, subdivisions of the San Francisco County Code, petitioner, area plan commission.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, bill number one zero four dash twenty comes with a full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, the D A B Well, uh, Area Plan Commission. This is the repeal and replacement of the San Francisco County subdivision ordinance. Perhaps the major, uh, the most major change is the elimination of the three lot rules for major subdivisions. Uh, for, per current ordinance, the subdivision is considered major if it results in more than three lots having been created from a parcel as of existence in nineteen seventy-seven. Staff has determined that the number of past divisions has had minimal impact on ground properties and has only required a newer subdivision if infrastructure needs to be extended. Additionally, uh, the subdivision ordinance has a lot of features that have been, uh, added that make it a little more user-friendly and help with the ease of administration. Certain elements have been eliminated from the ordinance but are, uh, going to be included from here on out on the application documents. Outlets are excluded from the lot area impetus requirement because they're non-durable by definition, we don't need to require a variance. And then we've eliminated the need to do corrective flats. These have been handled, uh, via affidavits and feel that it's the best way to correct these via affidavits rather than making them file for a corrective flat. Digital submission will be required, um, as it has been prior, but I think a lot of this is more likely than the subdivision ordinance. And then we, again, uh, going back to ease of administration, create one procedural section for all subdivisions rather than have, than having them broken out into different sections within the ordinance. It's been reviewed by surveyors within the county, the Home Builders Association, Departments of Health, Engineering, and the County Surveyors. It comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the A P C.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number one oh four dash twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on one oh four dash twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
There's a motion to pass, bill number one oh four dash twenty was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tawoyan?
Yes.
Tanswray?
Yes.
Ms. Camaricki?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number one oh four dash twenty was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda, unfinished business, is bill number fifty-eight twenty. Uh, just as a reminder, um, the public hearing on fifty-eight twenty, uh, is closed. Uh, we had that at our last meeting and it was motion to table. So with that said.
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Nolan?
I would like to make a motion to bring bill number fifty-eight dash twenty off the table.
Thank you.
Do I, do I hear a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to bring bill number fifty-eight twenty taken off the table and bring it back to council. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Well, might as well take a voice, voice vote, just to make sure.
Yeah. Right, Morton, the voice vote, untable it? Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tawoyan?
Yes.
Sorry, Morton.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tanswray?
Yes.
Mr. Camaricki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
Uh, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries on eight to one, untabled.
Let the record show that the motion to untable bill number fifty-eight twenty was passed by a vote of eight to one. May I have a motion on bill number fifty-eight twenty?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to, a motion to pass bill number fifty-eight twenty was made by Councilman Camaricki, it was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can't do that till now.
Pardon?
That's, now was the right time to do that.
Okay. So, uh, we, we need a motion to amend bill number fifty-eight twenty?
May I motion to amend?
Okay, motion to amend, to amend bill fifty-eight twenty was made by Councilman Krasinski, seconded by Councilman Nolan. Correct?
What is your amendment, your proposing?
Yep.
I believe.
Jen said we needed to amend fifty-eight.
I believe the intent was to change shall to may.
To may, right.
I don't, I can get, I can get you the section number.
Oh, we didn't get to that.
Section six, section B, third line down, change the word shall to may, is what I understood. Ms. Hess would like the amendment to be, is that correct?
Do we have to, to talk about the other amendments that were made to the, the ordinance? The, the, um, end date and the, or the sunset date and the, um, OSHA? Or is it?
Yes, 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 we can, we can do that in one amendment, correct? Yes.
Correct.
So I think Mark Tawoyan is the one that's recommending that.
Apparently it's presented as amended.
Section six B.
So, so the, it's, I mean, it's in front of us as amended, the only amendment that we'd be making beyond that is.
Shall.
May.
Okay, great, okay, just to make, just to make sure everybody's on the right track, okay? Present it as amended, but the only other change is the shall to may.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like?
Question is.
Shall.
The ordinance in the form that was presented by the Health Department that was circulated by the council for action.
I appreciate that.
Which includes all of your amendments, all of the Health Department requests amendment, plus Mr. Nolan or Ms. Hess and any additional amendments. And we vote on that amendment and then vote on the ordinance.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
I would, just so everybody's clear, what I would like, because we may have, somebody may be looking at a different version, Diana, I think, is the voice of authority on all of this to very large degree. Could you explain what those three or four changes are so that everybody's aware of what they actually, what was changed, the most recent version?
Okay, I, I must say, I don't have the ordinance in front of me right now, but we had said that the ordinance would remain in effect until the April, uh, twenty twenty-one public hearing, at which time council would review it and decide to either continue or rescind, uh, that. Uh, and then a second change was made that, uh, the ordinance would not supersede any, I think, Indiana or, or federal OSHA guidelines. Uh, that's a rough, um, rough take on that. I see Dr. Interes is on here too, if he wants to correct me on that or add any detail.
You are, permission to speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Paul Interes, Health Officer, San Joe County. Uh, that is correct. Uh, section one was, uh, changed such that the reading now says, uh, this, the language now states, uh, this ordinance shall be in effect until the county council public hearing in April twenty twenty-one, at which time the council will make a determination to renew it, change it, or rescind it. The council has the option to rescind the ordinance anytime after passage of the ordinance if the council determines the conditions within the county no longer merit the ordinance. And then in section five, uh, C, this ordinance does not supersede Indiana or federal OSHA workplace, uh, guidelines. All other, uh, aspects of the ordinance, uh, were as previously submitted and then, uh, as noted, uh, Mr. Tawoyan has requested, uh, the change from shall to may, which I fully support.
Thank you.
Thank you. So. Do I hear a motion to approve the amendments as stated?
Just a quick point of clarity, Mr. Tanswray brought this up, um, in this paragraph, shall is there twice, uh, the Health Officer shall investigate the complaint or suspicion and shall take whatever action is warranted in accordance with the provisions of the ordinance. Are we replacing both shells with may?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
May I have a motion on fifty-eight twenty as amended?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass bill number fifty-eight twenty as amended, was made by Councilman Nolan, it was seconded by Councilman File. Any other comments from any council member on fifty-eight twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you, yes?
I would just like to say that I appreciate the, uh, discretion and thoughts of those who were inclined to vote right away for passage of this motion, to listen to those who were opposed and had some concerns, that's much appreciated.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from any council member? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tawoyan?
Yes.
Mr. Tanswray?
Yes.
Mr. Camaricki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
Um, Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number fifty-eight twenty as amended was passed by a vote of eight to one. Next on the agenda is new business. Next on the agenda is motion to adjourn?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.